Wonderful. Thank you, everybody, and good morning. I would like to call this meeting of the Taus County Board of County Commissioners to order on Tuesday, March 21, 2023, at 9:10. Apologies for the brief delay this morning. We all know how technology can get in our way as much as it helps us. Madam Clerk, would you please call hold?
Commissioner Romero?
Here.
Commissioner Vehil?
Present.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Here.
Vice Chair Romero?
Present.
Chairbrush?
Here. Thank you very much. We've got everyone in attendance this morning. Commissioner Mascaranias, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And if everyone could please stand, will we say the pledge?
That allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the salute to the flag of the state of New Mexico. Commissioner Vehil, would you?
Sure, absolutely. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. It is a symbol of a perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. This takes us to item six on our agenda, Approval of the Agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascaranias. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Romero, we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call for the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you very much. And this brings us to maybe the most important part of our agenda this morning. Item seven, Awards and Recognitions. And we have a very important, noteworthy, and special recognition to bestow this morning. So, Mr. Harmio, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And please come up, Chris, and Mike, and James. For those that, for the public, this is Fire Chief Mike Cordova. This is James Hampton, our fire marshal and inspector. And of course, the man of the hour, Chris Medina, EMS Director, EMS Chief. I don't, and Chris also has his family with him. His wife Anita's here, his sister, and, and his in-laws. So they're all here to support him. And so I just want to thank him for his service. I've known Chris quite a few years. I first met him through his wife Anita. And that's when he was going to UNM for, become a paramedic. And so Chris has put in 25 years with the county, and he's been dedicated. Even till the end, you've heard me mention it, a couple of meetings ago, being short-handed. Chris is on the rig. I've seen him on those Fridays, driving the ambulance and just being short-staffed. Chris jumped in there, no questions asked. So with that, we have a certificate of retirement presented to Christopher Medina of the Taus County Board of Commissioners and County Manager. Would like to honor and thank you for your dedication and service to Taus County, for the community, for the past 25 years, for your devotion of hard work throughout these years, and enjoy this new journey of your life and happy retirement. Presented this 21st day of March, 2023. Signed, Commissioner Bob Romero, Commissioner Miguel Romero Jr., Commissioner Darlene Vehil, Commissioner Angelina Brush, and Ronald Mascaranias, and myself. And we also have a challenge coin for Chris. And he probably, I don't, this might be the first challenge coin he has of this one, but he's one of, along with Mike and a few others here at the county, collect a challenge coin. So this says that the recipient of this coin has been recognized for your outstanding commitment to Taus County. And thank you, Chris.
Chief Cordova has a presentation as well.
You knew I couldn't not talk, right?
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. Chris, man, 25 years, right? So Chris is the second EMT to retire from Taus County Fire and EMS. We had one previous, or third, I'm sorry, but our second EMT, paramedic, that retires from Taus County Fire and EMS. So Chris started his career in 1995, I believe. He got his EMT basic and then went on to EMT intermediate. Side note, the county did not hire him when he first applied. Little weird, huh? Yeah, so he applied, he didn't get hired right away. He went into his intermediate class, he passed that. And luckily, he did, because we're required to do CE's every two years. He did none. So if he wouldn't have passed his EMT intermediate, he wouldn't be standing here today. So kudos to him. Then from 99 to 2000, went on, get his paramedic license. Since then, he's kind of hit the ground running. Chris has went through 14 directors in the 25 years he's been here. He's also ran an average, we calculated yesterday, of 17,000 EMS calls in the 25 years he's been here. He still remembers his first one, so that says a lot about him, right? He cares a lot about this community and this county as a whole. The one thing, 14 directors, 25 years, 17,000 calls. Chris has been a constant for Taus County Fire and EMS through the hard times, through the good times, through the fun times. And he's been our constant the past seven years, now that he's been EMS chief. He stepped in when our previous director left. And, you know, he's taught us all a lot, and he's been patient with all of us. And he's seen all of us grow. But I think one thing I don't think he realizes that we saw in him is that he grew quite a bit too, as a leader. And whether he likes to take that notion or not, he's carried us through a pandemic, through COVID-19. He was the, the running force with that. I mean, he would spend different hours doing the, what's it called? Ozone, with the ozone at the courts, here, EMS, you know, never got paid, never extra time, nothing. Wake up at 3:00 in the morning, come and switch that ozone machine out, run to a different office, do all that. The same with our trucks. He put a lot of hours in, and he got us through it. And he said, you know, oddly enough, his, one of his most proudest moments was for COVID that the EMS staff didn't get sick. You know, and he takes pride in that, that he led us through that, and he got us through it, and nobody got sick. Late night calls of crews calling in because they felt sick or something, he's been there. And today, he's still on the truck. He's actually going to leave from here, and he'll be on the truck for the last few hours, for sure. But we thank him for everything, and we owe a lot to you, Chris. And you don't give yourself enough credit, and we do appreciate everything you've done for us and moving the county forward from where it was when you started to now. You've done a lot. You've kind of been the sideline guy, like you'll push us to be our best, and you always have, right? Bad days, good days, if you need a joke or someone to kind of make it fun, he's your guy for sure. So we're waiting for him to now just call 911 because he's bored and wants to see us, I guess, right? But no, Chris, we thank you for everything. And just know, man, that no one can ever fill your shoes, and we're not going to fill them. We'll leave them at the door for you, though, if you want to step back in them. You always have a place for us, for sure. So this, Chris, is from us, the crews, the office staff, everybody. And it says, "Presented to Chris Medina in appreciation for your 25 years of faithful and dedicated service to the Taus County Fire and EMS Department." So Chief, there you are. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for, you know, biggest thing is, thank you for allowing me to be a part of Taus County. You know, I've done a lot in this career, you know, starting off, you know, at the bottom and working my way up. You know, you know, done flight service, worked for the hospital, been all over the place. But I never did leave Taus County. Taus County has always been my home, and this is where I've always, you know, this is where I've always come back to. So, you know, I want to thank all the crews, you know, the staff, the crews, the office staff, you know, for their, you know, wonderful years of service. You know, these guys continue to do the job day in and day out, you know, and they're going to continue to do it long after I'm gone. And, you know, these guys deserve a lot of credit, you know, for what they do. So I want to thank them personally for that. And most importantly, what I do, who I want to thank the most is my wife. My wife and my son couldn't be here today, but my wife is here. She's the most important person in my life, and, you know, without her support, without, you know, her sacrifice, you know, that's one of the things I think we forget about working in emergency services, is the families, you know, because they take, you know, they sacrifice just as much as we do. You know, the long hours, the being gone, the holidays, things like that, they sacrifice. And so, you know, I, you know, without her support, without her love, you know, I probably wouldn't be here today as well. And my, and my mom and my dad as well, and my sister. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Chris, thank you. We owe you a gigantic debt of gratitude for your service to Taus County and also for your leadership in how you've served and how you've run the department. But I think mostly for going above and beyond. That's who you are, and we've all seen it, even those of us who haven't been around you for anywhere near 25 years. Just a few months ago, five, six months ago, we got to observe and dress up for fire training, and you were there. Like, you were a few months away from retirement, and you were still there, pushing yourself and setting an example for everyone around you. So thank you. And I think Chief Cordova is right about how much you've taught everyone. I know how to administer Narcan because of your excellent teaching, and that's important. So thank you so much, and thank you to your family as well for your many years of service. You're not someone any of us ever wants to have to call in, but we're darn lucky that you're, you've been the one to show up when we've needed you. So thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, I also want to extend my gratitude. Chris, I do remember that day when we were at that fire training, and you were in that box where it was full of smoke. And, I mean, we saw you come out, and, I mean, you put a lock into it. All those that were there just really gave it all, their all. But yeah, you did set the example. I also have to tell you, you know, I know you've done your years of service, and you, what's really impressive is that you started from the bottom up. And that means a lot, because those that go through those ranks really understand what it's all about. And so we appreciate that. Also, you said something really important, and that's family. And you're right, the sacrifices that our family have to really, you know, it has to be there in order for you to do your job at your best. You know, you also did have a lot to do with EMS and fire coming together. And as we proceed going forward, we want to thank you for that, because that's collaboration right there at its best. So thank you very much.
Yeah, well said, Commissioner Vehil. Thank you. Commissioner Romero?
Chris, congratulations. You're going to enjoy it for a while, then you're going to, you're going to find something else to do. But I do remember when you first started, for the calls that we went to, I was green, you were green. But A, we worked as a team. And you formed that, that what we call a family-team effort, where it's not just law enforcement, it's not fire, it's not EMS, it's a team working as a family. And good job on what you've done, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Mascaranias?
Mr. Medina, congratulations to getting here where you're at. I hope you enjoy your retirement, enjoy your family and your parents. Life's short, take advantage of what you have. I know it's a thankless job. A lot of the public or a lot of people don't realize, they just assume that the service is there for them. They don't realize what it takes for that service to continue to operate. You know, I too was a first responder for 22 years for a semiconductor company. And so I know the training and everything else. I remember 911 when it hit, and we're in the middle of training and all that. So it's, it's not an easy task, and it takes a lot of time and effort. So thank you for everything that you've given to Taus County. We appreciate it, and don't forget, we're here. And, you know, once, as Commissioner Romero says, once you, you know, finish that honey-do list and you want something else to do, remember, Taus County's still here, whether you, you know, there's different capacities that you can come back and serve as. So keep that in mind. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascaranias.
Congratulations, Chris, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. I think, should we come down and take a photo? And while we do that, maybe another round of applause for Mr. Medina.
Everybody look over here, so we're all looking the same way.
Then the two shortest ones are taking pictures. Speak for yourself. Oh, I'm sorry. The shortest one.
Well, that is certainly a tough act to follow, but follow it, we will. So anyone brave enough to follow that with their public comments, we are now on the public comments section of the agenda, Agenda Item 8. And if you would like to make a public comment here in the room, you can make your way up to the podium. If you were watching on our YouTube channel, you can dial in. I'm going to turn the phone off of Do Not Disturb, and you can dial in at 575-737-6310. So if there's anyone in the room who has anything they would like to say, you have three minutes. And I'm not seeing anyone make their way forward, but we'll give it a minute. See if anyone calls in. Again, that number is 575-737-6310. This might be a first. Yeah. All right, then, we'll put the phone back on Do Not Disturb and move on to Agenda Item 9. I think I said comments was seven, but that was actually eight. Agenda Item 9 is Approval of our March 7, 2023 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you very much. And now we're on to Item 10, Presentations. This is a good one this morning, everyone. This is our introduction of the USDA's Rural Partners Network Program and the Rural Partners Network Community Liaison. We have Raul Hurtado, our Rural Partners Network Community Liaison. Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Raul Hurtado. I am with USDA's Office of Rural Development. And I'm pretty excited about introducing you guys to a new network. A few months ago, several months ago, the current administration, USDA, along with some other federal partners, got together and came up with this idea to build a network across the country where we could, you know, introduce federal resources to rural communities and kind of help these rural communities get connected to these federal resources. And so we work with several agency partners across the government, the US federal government, over 20 in fact. And I am excited to introduce the Rural Partners Network, a program administered by USDA's Office of Rural Development. RPN works on the ground, or will be working on the ground, in northern New Mexico to provide support to the Northern New Mexico Pathways Economic Development District. I'll be working closely with those points of contact from that district to provide some connections to these different programs. My job is the community liaison, and I'm going to be working to, like I said, you know, help these rural communities and rural governments or individuals or small businesses get connected to federal resources. As you all know, sometimes the federal process can be overwhelming, right? Navigating through an application or a request, funding a request or whatever, putting together a proposal can be overwhelming. And my job is going to be to kind of help navigate that process and help the applicant or the partner kind of get the support they need. We're going to be providing not only technical support, but resources and staff from across the federal government to improve access to these programs and advance local projects. Some of those projects include infrastructure. We're working closely with Rural Development's Office of Program, or not Office of Programs, excuse me, Community Programs Department with the Housing Division to help with the disaster work. And so there are some new rules that are getting revised right now. Some of the funding limitations are going to be increased specifically for grants. I know right now there are some renovation grants available that the cap is, they're capped at $10,000, but right now where they're going to be increasing those to close to $36,000. So we're working closely with, you know, not only, you know, state-level resources, but some of the Washington Office-level resources to help us, you know, kind of navigate through these processes, but also providing feedback up so they can, for example, increase those limits. My name is, like I said, Raul, and I'm a community liaison with RPN, and I'm going to be working with the community network. This community network that I'm talking about encompasses four, here in northern New Mexico, encompasses four counties, Taus being one of them. We have Colfax, Mora, and San Miguel being the other three. Let's see here, the Rural Partners other three. Let's see here, the Rural Partners Network also seeks to empower rural communities to get their fair share of federal funds, which is essential not only for economic development, but also to ensure the equitable access to federal resources and assistance to these different communities. The Rural Partners Network is something that, like I said, you know, is participating in trying to bring, you know, multiple federal agencies together to provide the support to these communities. As you can see on the presentation right there, the network is pretty robust. We have folks from the White House all the way down to the Forest Service and in between Small Business Administration, EPA, Social Security Administration, the US Department of Transportation, among many others on that list that we're working with to get these programs and resources to these rural communities. The collaborations and the objective is to build collaborations and introduce you guys to the network, right? We want, we want to be here, like I said, to provide the support you need to navigate through the request or the proposal process, the application process. And again, as the liaison, that's gonna be a big part of my job. These collaborations are gonna be designed to provide rural communities a single front door to the broad array of federal programs and tools and expertise that are out there, offered through all of these partners, federal partners. And we also, the collaborations are also gonna be designed to increase access to technical assistance, like I said, a building capacity to plan and develop projects. I'm gonna be working, like I said, with the Northern Mexico Pathways Economic Development District, working closely with their staff, Felicity and among a few others. And so, it's really important that we continue to build these collaboratives, right? The other thing that these collaborators are gonna do is they're gonna improve the delivery of federal funding in rural areas and ensure lasting outcomes for the local economies and people. And so, as you know, down on the other side, just over the hill, there was a big disaster last year, right? And so, a big part of my work is gonna be working to provide support to Mora and San Miguel counties as well. And so, we want, we want to deliver federal funding. We want to increase access to these, to these communities, right? We want to help them recover. That's gonna be a big part of the network's job here in northern New Mexico. The collaborations are also gonna be designed to inform program leaders and policymakers about the rural opportunities and priorities, right? So, a priority right now, like I said, is the disaster. Other opportunities exist, right? I mean, we all have ideas and projects that we want to bring forward. They all require planning, they all require funding, design, we all want to get to implementation. So, my job is gonna be to help you navigate, like I said, through the federal processes to get the support you need, to get to that end goal, which is implementation of maybe deploying broadband across a rural community, for example, or installing a new water system for an underserved community, right? And so, we have a lot of work cut out for us, as you know. And my job also is gonna be relationship building, researching and acting as an advocate for RPM, USDA and other federal agencies. I will help identify stakeholders to participate in the community network and will be visiting them very soon. To give you an idea of something like that, last week, I met with Commissioner Serna down in Mora to get them, you know, introduced to the network. And we want to provide support to them as well. So, just an example of the work that I'll be doing. If you're interested in participating in the community network or receiving funding opportunities or more information, please log on to rural.gov. There are a number of links there, some dropdown menu items that will direct you to some of the, the history of the program, news releases, a list of programs that are available. So, I'm gonna be your point of contact. If you have any questions, you guys can please reach me by email. My email is there, you have it in your packet, the phone number on that third bullet, Northern Mexico Pathways Economic Development District, that's me. That's my, the district I'm responsible for. My phone number is up there. Guys, I'll have all that information. But if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I look forward to working with Taos County. I was talking to Chris Madrid before, you know, a little bit before this, this meeting. And I said, hey, you know, Taos County, I'm pretty excited to be working with this county. You guys have resources, you guys have folks that are in place that understand, you know, the federal process, that understand how to go after funding, that are willing to, you know, lift up their hand and say, hey, I want to see my community get plugged into the network. And so, that's really exciting for me. A little bit about me before I conclude, I have 17 years of federal service. Most recently, I was with the Forest Service, working as a disaster recovery coordinator down in Las Vegas. I did a detail down there for 120 days. So, I'm very familiar with, you know, the communities and the work that's out there and the need that RPM is gonna be addressing. And so, I also am from northern New Mexico. I've been here, I was born in Las Cruces but raised in the mountains just over the hill. Personally, I was also impacted by the Hermans Peak Catanha wildfire, like many, many people here, maybe online, maybe not here. But, so last May was, was, was very emotional for me and my family. We got through it. And so, I have a personal connection. And so, this work that we're gonna be doing is meaningful, not only to me, but to many families that were impacted. And so, I want to thank you guys for the work that you do as federal servants, or as, as, as public servants, I'm a federal servant. And so, I really appreciate the work that the local level does. It's really important that we continue to partner together. And I'd like to see Taos County become one of those leading partners in the network. And like I said, I'll be working with Felicity and Chris and a few other people on the ground to get the technical support you need. And so, really, that's all I have for now. I don't want to take up too much time. I was given 10 minutes and hopefully I didn't go over. But I, you know, I gave you guys a copy of my speech or my introduction letter. And so, if you have any questions, again, reach out to me. Check out rural.gov. I know folks may have some questions. And right now, I guess if we can do that, we can open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hurtado. Thank you so much for being here. And it's great to know that you are so personally connected to this work. Like that, that can tell already that that's driving your passion for it. Commissioners, do you have questions?
I do. Thank you very much for being the liaison. And I think that this program is gonna be very helpful to us. We just need to figure out how we can, you know, what kind of projects we have or the community has. But for the sake of the other commissioners that really don't know how we got here, can someone kind of say, kind of talk, speak about how we, it was an application, right, that we applied for, yes, and how we got here? It would be really helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Beal. So, over a year ago, and it's taken a little while, this, this program comes out of the White House. And it was actually an Obama era program that never took off. And so Biden brought it back as a means to figure out how we get resources to the most rural areas that are underserved. And so, that's what, that's what excites me about this. They've got to perform. And so, we can help them perform by getting projects through this. It's called Rural Partners Network. There's only three of them in New Mexico. They asked San Miguel and Taos County to apply and basically compete with each other. And Taos County had the vision of saying, why do we compete? Why don't we partner? And not only partner, but since we're not contiguous, they said, Mora's a good partner and Colfax is a good partner. So, the whole region, instead of competing, got together, put in a letter of interest, and we're one of three programs. The other two programs, one is in Doniani, Doniana County, and the other one's in the far southwest corner of the state. We're the only one up north. There were only five states participating. Now, there, there are 10. Now, we didn't come out of the gate quickly because they had trouble finding the right person. But what's exciting is they, they found the right person. I've already put this gentleman to the test. He takes my phone calls, he responds with information. Last week, Jason and I were working on, I think, eight grants for congressionally directed spending. We were buried. I was filling in the application that says, did you talk to a representative of the program that you're looking to apply to? And I said, oh my God, I didn't talk to him. I called these guys and I said, I need a contact. The next morning at 8:00 in the morning, I got a call from USDA. I had the conversation and I could put the right information. So, that's how this program works. The, the other thing is I went to a training back in October, back east in Pittsburgh, and DOT, Department of Transportation was talking. And they made, they made it clear to introduce us to the Rural Partner Network representation of DOT that's gonna be involved in this program. So, that told me, this network is, now when we have road, road projects, we can, through Raul, get to DOT and have a conversation. Is this gonna work? We can back channel. And in the economic development world, those relationships matter. So, we're excited about that. And I want to commend Taos County, before I even joined, for having the vision of being a real partner in the region and not just saying, you know, just for us. You know, economic development doesn't stop at our borders. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Thank you for that. Good question. And thank you, Chris, for some of the background. It is an exciting program. You know, there are lots of opportunities out there, but there aren't suddenly lots of new people here at Taos County to pursue them. So, having you there to kind of clear the path and make those connections is, it's just such a smart program. I'm really glad that you're part of it. Commissioners, other questions for Mr. Hurtado?
Okay. That's great. Lastly, I just want to say, like, Chris, to follow up really quick, we have rural desk officers that are representing each federal agency. So, like the DOT example, we have somebody, a rural desk officer that we can reach out to, to connect us, you know, to make that, to make that connection, right? So, yes, very, very exciting times. And so, thank you for, for your time.
I just have one last question. I'm not sure if it's for you or for, for us, for our team, which is like, what, what are our next steps? What do we do next to really start engaging and taking advantage of the program?
That's a really good question. So, I think the slide before, there's the next step. So, there's the, well, we have what you call a PIF, a project, excuse me, inquiry form. And so, a project inquiry form has been developed to document project requests and needs within the RPM. And so, really, what you can do is you can go to that link, fill out some basic information, right? Who you are, who you represent, and so on and so forth. What, what kind of project you're looking to, you know, to get funded, right? And so, the resources that you need, it's a one-page, you know, form. And then you get that submitted to the database. I have access to the database. I'll pull it up. We'll be following up with, you know, with where we can go with next steps. So, right now, what you can do, if you have an idea or a project in mind, let's get it submitted through the project inquiry form. I'll take it back to my team and we'll see what we can do to connect you with the right partner within the network.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, so it seems like our next step, as a team of commissioners here, is to get together and start talking about what projects we might put on that form.
That might tie, tie into our conversation later today about our priorities and, and see what, what the team also is thinking. But yeah, that's, that's our next step. Thank you so much, Mr. Hurtado. It's wonderful to meet you. Thank you. Okay, this takes us on to Item 11 on the agenda, New Businesses, which is, today we have Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding a Request for Taos Air Service Funding for Summer Season 2023 and Winter Season 2324. Mr. Harameo?
Chris.
And I see we have Carina and Joe in the audience. Again, thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, at the last commission meeting, we did have a presentation by Taos Air. Joe Soveda provided the presentation. And then, Ms. Harameo, I took a different aspect on the marketing dollar, well, not the marketing dollars, the dollars that Taos Air generates through a marketing study done by Southwest Planning. The Taos County does have sufficient lodger's tax monies for this project. And it'd be staff's recommendation that we would fund the two requests of 150,000 each, one for the summer service and then for the winter service, for a total of 300,000.
Okay. Commissioner Beal?
Okay. Yes, I thank you for that, Manager Harameo. I would like to, I want to say, first of all, this has been a really tough one in general, but I would like to make a motion to continue this matter until the ECOG meeting takes place, which is on Thursday. For those that aren't aware or familiar with ECOG, Enchanted Circle of Government.
Council of Governments.
Thank you, Government. It's gonna take place on Thursday. And I believe today, Chair, you would have probably have mentioned, or will mention, so that the commissioners can attend if they'd like to. But I believe the topic at hand is Taos Air. And I think it's only fair and right that we see what comes out of that meeting, as it could add some additional information.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Beal to continue this item.
Madam Chair, yes, I think there's no question that there has been some economic impact over the past five years through the air service. And I have personally not flown on Taos Air, but I've talked to a number of people that have and, and also people who have talked to me about, about having served, having flown. And finally, the money is from lodger's tax and it's very limited on how we can use that money. And this is one allowable use. So, I would like to second that motion.
To continue the, the item to a later date. Okay, so we have, yeah, Mr. Harameo.
I just want to make sure that Commissioner Romero is clear. Where is Commissioner Beal's postponing, asking to postpone the vote?
Okay, I misinterpreted the motion. And nonetheless, what I said is, is that I, I think that it's very limited on how we can serve this money. So, I think we need to move forward on it.
Okay, well, we can, if there's a second, then we can voice that by, by vote. We have a motion from Commissioner Beal on the table to continue this, which is postponing it until a later date after, am I getting that wrong, Patrick? A date after the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments meeting this Thursday, because you, what you want to see is what comes out of that meeting. So, there's a motion on the table. Mr. Trujillo, are we?
Madam Chair, I think it would be best to continue the matter to a date certain, trying to figure out what.
Okay, okay, to a certain date.
We're, the managers, yeah. If we could, if you want to amend the motion to say that you're continuing this matter until April 4th?
Yes, I would like to amend my, my motion to continue this matter to the next commission meeting, which is April 4th.
Okay, Commissioners, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Beal and seconded by Commissioner Mascheranos. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascheranos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
No.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Okay, so we will come back to this. We'll observe the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments meeting on Thursday and then have this back on the agenda on April 4th. And hopefully, we can ask you both to, to come back again or to watch us again. So, all right. Thank you. And that then takes us on to Item 12, Contracts, Agreements, MOUs and Bids. We have Item A, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Giving the Chair the Authority to Sign a Final Contract as Fiscal Agent Between Taos County and Facility Build for TCEDC Hunger Initiative Grant Request Not to Exceed $400,000 and Services Will Be Procured Via State Purchasing Agreement. Mr. Madrid, our deputy county manager, will walk us through this after he gives us the info. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we have a project, we're, we're a fiscal agent for a grant received by TCEDC, about 1.4 million dollars for one phase of a project. This is to bring a cut and wrap facility out by the road going to the, to the gorge. It's a phased, this is gonna take more money than just the 1.4 million that the entity has. But they're gonna be placing the facility on city property. City in turn is City in turn is working with Economic Development Department for a LITA grant to finish the, the infrastructure. Uh, right now, we, we raise our cattle, we ship them out of state, they get processed, and then we bring back the meat. We're missing that economic component. And we're not, our, our ranchers deserve, uh, to have access to services and not have to go to Colorado for these services. Uh, what's really exciting about this project is the, um, the individual involved, Mr. Salazar, has multi-generational experience. He act, he has a facility in Southern Colorado. He lives here in Taos. So we have the opportunity to take advantage of his expertise. Again, we're the fiscal agent. We don't get to, uh, direct this, but we're supporting TCEDC in this effort. And, um, the clock is running. We have until June 30th to spend this money. So, uh, I, I'm trying to do everything I can to make sure we don't lose any time. Typically, we want to come to you with a final contract for consideration, uh, but we're coming to you with the proposal you have in hand. You'll note it's not the $400,000. It's, uh, closer to $250,000. Talked to, uh, Richard Sanchez and he advised that we don't want our contractors to think the dollar amount's here. We want to kind of hold them to task. So hopefully they're not, they're not listening today. Uh, but the, the request is, uh, if you can work with this proposal that would authorize the chair to sign, uh, review and sign the contract if it's appropriate, uh, when that contract is complete.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid. Commissioners, any questions for Chris? And I know Commissioner Vehill, you are very close to this project.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, I am very close to it as, uh, you, uh, Commissioners are aware. I sit on the board of TCEDC and I believe Miguel, Commissioner Domero, here is our, is the, um, the alternate. And so I, I have been part of TCEDC, uh, from the day that I walked into, to the commission seat and, uh, a full believer in, in what they're doing and what they're, uh, providing for the community. I will have to tell you that, um, Taos County staff has gone above and beyond. Uh, as Chris has, uh, explained, uh, you know, we are a fiscal agent for this organization. And so basically the money comes through, filters through, um, Taos County and, but the project belongs to TCEDC. But we have a heck of a team. Once again, collaboration at its best, uh, Town of Taos, uh, and the mayor does sit on that board as well. So we've, uh, come together and it's, it's, uh, we've been gathering ranchers for quite some time, uh, and getting a feel for what they, uh, their needs are and, and, uh, what they can, their expertise is brought to the table. And so this is definitely a very crucial, important, um, very, um, loved project. And so I think as we move forward, we will, uh, see or hear more of what's going to take place. So I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, this, um, to allow our chair to sign.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Am I jumping the gun here?
No, um, I don't think so. I, I just wanted to point out that if, if Commissioner Vehill is on the board of this group, it's really inappropriate for you to vote on this matter. So I think the best, uh, thing for you to do would be to abstain.
I totally understand and thank you for bringing that to my attention. With that being said, I will abstain.
Can her motion still stand? No. So we are, unless there are further questions about this item for Mr. Madrid, um, is, is there a motion? I would like to make the motion. Yeah. You can't, you're the alternate. You haven't been to the meeting so far, right? Yeah, so he can, would you like to make a motion, Miguel?
Am I allowed to make a motion? Being that I, what, uh, well, what, tell me about, uh, the alternate duties. Have you been attending the meetings? Have you been?
I haven't attended. I will attend if she can't make it, that's.
But I typically make it.
Right.
But that hasn't, that has not yet happened.
I think it's still a problem. I, I, I think, I think, sir, that it would probably be best if you abstained as well.
Just a quick question, just, um, clarification. So Taos County Commissioners sit on many boards. And so anytime anything comes through, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering what are the benefits if, if in the future we cannot, uh, in any way support? I'm not sure if it's beneficial for us to sit on the board, but I guess at this point, I'm just, you know, thinking about it.
We can, we can have that, we can have that conversation. Um, yeah. And, but, but thank you and thank you, Mr. Trujillo, for the guidance. Since this is giving me the authority to sign, I would prefer not to be the one to make the motion. So gentlemen, to my left, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the request to allow, uh, our county manager to sign the contract.
It's actually giving the chair the.
Giving the chair. Oh, it's the chair, right?
And I'll second that motion.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Abstain.
Commissioner Vehill?
Abstain.
Commissioner Mascanillas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. So with three yeses and two abstentions, the motion does pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This really is a model program. I've sat in meetings where the ranchers are talking about what they want to see, the city and, and the county working hard together, the planning department. It, it's a, it's a model program. I was a little bit worried because Commissioner Mascanillas has a hat and he's maybe close to ranching, might have been disqualified, but we, we got in. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. And thank you. And, and I, I just wanted to echo the thanks to the staff. I know there are a lot of people here who have worked really hard to support this effort. All right, Commissioners, this brings us to item 13 on our agenda, the consent agenda. And if there is any of these items, A through G, that you would like to discuss, we, now is the moment to make a motion to pull them. If not, we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, A through G.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascanillas. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascanillas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Thank you very much. And Brent, this brings us to you, item 14, county managers' reports and matters. Item A is update to the county commission on various items affecting Taos County.
Thank you, uh, Chair Brush. Good morning again, Commissioners. A lot of my comments will also be a little bit later this afternoon or this, later after the meeting. But to touch on a few items, um, Anissa and myself had met with members of the Taos Farmers Market. So Anissa has the contract prepared for them. So we are all on the same page by using the front parking lot. And, uh, they're going to use the entire parking lot. Obviously there'll be space saved for our employees that work at detention and dispatch. We're also going to encourage our employees to park in the back. And, uh, and then their overflow parking will be in this back parking lot as well. There's, looking for the beginning of May, this, we still haven't received their permit from the Town of Taos, but they're working on that. And, uh, once we get that in place, then they, they, uh, they'll bring us a copy of their insurance. They have, uh, $2 million liability insurance. So that will give us enough coverage and it'll warm the hearts of their attorneys as well. And then, uh, we're also working separately with, uh, Ariel Greenlee on, uh, uh, what's the other word she's using? Anissa, not farmers, uh, not, uh, flea market, uh, swapmate, uh, for this, uh, parking lot as well. They'll probably do that on a Sunday, uh, since we approved the policy. So we're working with her. We need to get, she knows she needs to provide us insurance as well. And she has about 30 vendors, so we're working with her as well. The, um, Car Show Club, not the Car Show Club, the, uh, Auto Enthusiasts are, do want to have Sunday evening, uh, car shows here. So we're working with them as well. Anissa's taking point in all, all three of these, so, uh, but they had the initial meetings with Farmers Market, uh, and Anissa will be their point of contact and same thing with, uh, the swapmate and, uh, the car show. Uh, Anissa will be that point of contact on that. With that, I'm going to ask, uh, Jason and Chris to also come up and report back on what they submitted for CDS, uh, funding as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Currently, last week was, uh, was an interesting week for, for both of us because we, uh, we knew it was coming up. It's just trying to get letter of support. Everybody has, has been gracious to help us, but trying to track down people to get it was a little bit more difficult than expected. But, uh, we have, up for myself at Congressional Spending Request, uh, Blueberry Hill on each of the, our federal delegations of Senator Heinrich, Senator Lohan, Representative Ledger Fernandez, uh, as well as two of those would be the, the John Donne switchbacks. So that's going to support the feasibility to study, feasibility study and design. So those were some of the requests that I submitted. One of the issues that I kind of keep coming up and it makes it, the state makes it difficult, is we, or between the state and the federal government, that we need to be placed on the STIP for any road projects, which that is the statewide transportation and infrastructure improvement plan. And for us to be placed on theirs, we need to have identified a level of funding to support this. So when we start getting a big project like 11 million dollars, um, it, we have our county coffers that we're going to be submitting for 2,000, $2 million. And then we'll have, uh, for Blueberry Hill, LGRF funds for three years of applications for another 1.1 million. So we do, we have taken on a initial response of fun, of designing the project and then putting allocation of money to support that. It still doesn't meet the criteria. So I'm trying to work angles because for us to receive any funds, I need to be placed to the STIP. But I have to go through the process of having DOT, uh, either provide a letter of support and then rework that angle to, to, to kind of take on that, uh, kind of requirement. So I felt that maybe there's another angle. So I went down the road, the avenue of agriculture and rural development, which doesn't put us in that. So I'm like trying to work two different angles of trying to see how we can get money in there. It's being creative because we may hit one roadblock, but we, it makes it difficult to work with the state because then they have these other capital improvements that are somewhat similar to what you see outside that are large capital projects that are $30 million projects. So sometimes they don't, they kind of push us to the curb, but we don't fall on the list. Anyways, uh, through that process, uh, those two are the two criterias that we're looking for in that angle and how we can support the greater community. The John Donne switchbacks, that one is another item of concern. This one still, I don't think will be funded though, you know? And I'm just putting it out there just for, for attempts of trying. It doesn't fit the criteria because it's more of a, I don't know, it's, I was told just to kind of submit for funding, but it probably would be rejected because there's not a clean identified of what would be the, the pocket of money that could support this project. So this really, we're going to need to really speak with our federal delegation of how they can support us with this because it hits our bordering properties of, of BLM and the, the federal properties of, what is it again? The Royal Grand, uh, National Monument? And I don't know how else we're going to support this project. And that where it comes back at a time, right? We're going to support 30 cars per day or 2,100 cars per day of our, our major road issues. And that one's probably going to be close to about a million dollar project. So in general, we're trying all we can to make this, the big items funded. Uh, but it, I hope that we can probably come with some sort of, I think our biggest, uh, we're putting all our eggs in the basket with Blueberry Hill and trying to support that because that supports the greater need of our community. I think that's, I, I sat for any questions at this time. There was something else I might have meant to bring up, but other than I think the obstacles that we have in trying to work different angles of where this pocket of money is at.
And Jason touched on it, but we are going to have to lobby the Department of Transportation to put this on their STIP plan. And that way, if we do get awarded federal funding, uh, it will be in line. And the other thing that I mentioned at the last meeting is we're looking at these projects 18 months out. So when Jason submitted for Blueberry Hill, we're calling this Phase Three. And, uh, right this year, we'll can do road construction to Phase One. We're hoping, uh, uh, transportation project fund, uh, monies will fund Phase Two. And, uh, and we're looking at this as Phase Three.
So as, as County Manager spoke to that and listened to the presentation of Mr. Hurtado, that's why I chased him out of here because that was one of those identified, uh, actions that I was like, I need for him to, to meet with New Mexico DOT to add us to the list or to the Federal Highway Administration. And that's where those rural partners are going to work together. So we've already, it was great to hear the presentation. Director, uh, Manager Madrid had given me feedback that he'll be here today. So we've already have another iron in the fire. So I networked with him. He's going to start working on something so I can get that letter to the STIP. If not, it's going to be a letter of support that's going to come from the federal highways as well. So that's, and that, this is all kind of just what you, present as you see, it's already blending and it's, we're working, it's, it's kind of a melting pot that we're working together with it.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Deputy Manager Silva, Commissioner Vehill?
It's a question or a comment here, but it seems more like a comment. I know we've been at, at this for quite some time with Blueberry Hill and, and I know you all, you know, are constantly trying to move that project forward. My concerns are that it takes such a long time to get those projects through. You know, there are other projects that, that are deserving, such as Highway 68 as you're coming in. You know, there's issues there, there's Tom Holder, um, there's, there's many. And so I, I, I just, I make this comment because I, I think the public, uh, may not be aware that as we're plugging in, um, trying to get the spending for Blueberry, we're also trying to work on other roads. Because sometimes it, it just feels like the focus is on Blueberry Hill, or at least it appears. But I know, and I want the public to know, that you all are working on others, other projects as well. But you have to get on that queue and to, you know, for example, Highway 68, that, I think that was discussed way back when, it got killed. And, and, you know, now, um, the community, uh, talks about it, you know, as you're coming into, to Taos, you have that one area that, that roads are really bad and then it goes into, to the town. So I, I'd like to certainly see what we can do there. But once again, we've got to get on that queue, in the queue to be able to even be considered.
So I'll forward you some, uh, submissions that we have that are going in today to the Northern Pueblo Regional Transit Planning Organization, which is the PIF, the Project Feasibility Forms. Those are in the process of being completed today. I just, once I finish with the meeting, I'm going to vet them, vet each of the applications. And then, uh, I'll forward submissions to the commissions so that you can identify. We'll have, those are, are coming, those are pulled into a little, uh, envelope, but that's where our call for projects are going to be submitted for, that, in May. But I need this project feasibility form to be completed today to add us to the list of presentations. So right now, even though it's not our project, New Mexico DOT 68 from the stakeout, 2518 is where I'm recommending because due to the influx of, of, uh, our community growing, we have a lot of, um, connecting roads that are county roads or private drives, but they are connecting roads and in a two-laned, two, the two-lane road that has a 65 mile hour speed limit. It's a safety issue. So what these are kind of, I'm identifying this first angle would be on this one here would be a safety study to identify the problem, how these county roads, roads that reside in the county but not county adopted roads are going to support the safety of individuals that are going to probably, my hope is the inception of the safety study would, would, uh, be a three-lane roadway with a turning lane that would adjacently go off to each of these roadways. And that's going to be from the, the, what I have in the project feasibility form at this time is from Stakeout Drive all the way up to 518, uh, and then potentially a light coming into, um, the U and M campus and where the old armory is at. Because there's just an influx of traffic coming in and out of there. So that is, will be here and that's, that isn't really our project. That's a DOT project. But since it's connecting roads for our constituents, I felt there was need at least to put that, like you say, on the queue or highlight it as a level of concern because our growing, our community is growing at a pace that we can't keep up with it. And I don't want to have a fatality on that road. So that's why I'm identifying it as this. The, the other one, um, that's coming up is going to be the Honda Seco Corridor from B007 all the way to Old State Road Three. Uh, that's a 2.85 mile. This one's a 4.8 mile, uh, PFF. Uh, this, the other one's a 2.8 and that's another safety corridor, uh, request that comes from the crossroads of, um, and, and the crossroads of Honda Seco, uh, B007. And this is an issue. And this is an issue that we get tons of traffic because it's a highlighted area of the John Donne Recreation Area. And it's more traffic than we would like to see, but it is an issue in that same type of situation that you spoke to. So that's on the queue as well. And this is something that Mr. Ted Thompson, I believe is his name, Sarah Salter have been requesting from the county or from DOT for probably going on maybe eight to ten years. So we finally, we're getting some momentum on that now that I knew that DOT, that's saying DOT is not doing their part. They just, it's, we're just bringing this to the attention as a safety concern, but it has kind of blown up because each of these two areas are growing at a pace that we can't support that traffic that's coming through both of these. Same thing, Tom Holder's on the list and our big monsters, Blueberry Hill's on the list as well. So those all have been identified as the major projects. And like I say, each of these projects are receiving twenty-three hundred plus cars per day for each of those. So it's the largest areas of, that are constituents utilize on a daily basis. So I sat for.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying because I know I kind of confused it there. Local, I mean, our county roads versus state highway. And so, but you explained it very well that those, the state highway, there are county roads that.
Connect to it. So it is our responsibility. These ones are a little bit, this one's going to be an interesting project of the one down south because none of those, they're roads that reside in the county, but that county maintains. So we don't even have as they access DOT, it really is, none of it's in our jurisdiction. The only one that will be is C one-ten, Cochilla Road, Western Meadow Road, and Yano. Those ones are actually connecting roadways, but there's about four roads that, you know, they're just private drives. But yes, but you'll see that, I'll forward that to you shortly once I vet these forms.
Thank you for the good question and thank you, Jason, for the answer.
Any other questions?
Commissioners, other questions for Deputy Manager Silva? Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Mr. Madrid.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. The process is somewhat reading tea leaves. We talked to the congressional delegation staff and they kind of tell us, we want to see projects completed. We want to see projects in rural areas. We want to see economic development projects. So we kind of strategize. So one of the congressionally-directed spending grants we requested was for the old county courthouse. Let's get that project done, let's get that building back in operation for the benefit of our, our community and our citizens. And we all know about that project. The other one is how do we get economic development to the rural areas? And I have to thank my county manager for a brilliant idea. Our buildings are dilapidated, we need roofs. We're going to lose these buildings if we don't get a roof on time. But it's economic development money, so how do we, how do we fix our roofs? So what we proposed was having co-working space at our various community centers in the more rural areas. Sort of modeling off of Talpa where you can go in there, there's a library, there's computers. So you don't have to drive all the way in to try to find a computer at a co-working space, but it's right next to you or in El Prado or further up north. So we, what we asked for was for equipment, furniture, computers, but also asked for money to make sure that we could maintain our buildings. So we used economic development so that we can provide these services on a local basis. So folks like SBDC can zoom in and have a conversation and not make somebody, or if they want to meet with Raul, they can go and have an interaction over the computer, initial introductions until they get to meet him in person. So that was a second one, it's called Rural Co-Working. And our partners, I talked to RDC, I talked to Economic Development, they're our partners. So if we get these resources there, they'll work with community members remotely, you know, before they get a chance to meet with them in person. And those are the two applications we put in.
Thank you, Deputy Manager Madrid, that's an exciting idea. And thank you, Manager Harmio, for also supporting that. Those, we have beautiful community centers and most of them do need some extra support, so that's an exciting idea. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Madrid? No, all right, thank you very much.
So the next item, we get illicit letters of interest from community members, business owners. Those interested in the lodging tourist industry to serve on our lodgers tax advisory board. We did get five individuals that want to be a part of the board and we'll be bringing forth their names at the next commission meeting for ratification. Chris is giving you a copy of those individuals. So at the next commission meeting, we'll have that on there. So we'll constitute a lodgers tax board.
And Brent, if I may, just a clarifying point. The lodgers tax board provides input and direction or recommendation on the portion of lodgers tax that is directed toward promotions, right?
Promotional grant opportunities, so.
And that's forty percent that they're weighing, that's forty percent of the total, correct? Yeah.
If I could, Madam Chair. So that's what the statute requires, a minimum of forty percent. You're allowed to use the other portion for promotion if you choose, or you can use the other portion for other uses.
Thank you, thank you. Just to clarify what their role is, because then that will lead to a future conversation about what your recommendations and our ideas are for the remaining sixty percent or less, so.
Yes, and I'm very grateful that we did get some individuals that have shown interest. I have taken the time to read the lodgers tax best practices, so handbook, and so certainly if anyone wants a copy. But yeah, it actually prompted some ideas that we might be able to bring forth at a later date.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I spoke with all these folks individually. They're capable, they're from the industry, they're enthusiastic to step up and serve. I was not successful in getting somebody, a letter of interest from the Ojo Caliente area. That was one of my objectives, so.
And Deputy Manager Madrid, that actually leads me to one of my questions. Do you feel, and I know it's not, you know, not to put you on the spot, it's not necessarily the last word here, but do you feel that we have a good geographic dispersment with these five folks that we were looking at?
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes, we have C Papu, El Prado. And I didn't know, I always thought of El Prado as just, you know, on the main road, but I didn't realize it goes way out there. We have somebody who, you know, works in Cuesta and then another entity from Rancho's. Just, it feels like a good, capable board as it stands right now.
Thank you, appreciate it. Brent, do you have further updates or are we moving on to item B?
It's done, for any questions?
Any questions for Manager Harmio team? Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to item fourteen B, which is the 2023 legislative update.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As I indicated in the email that I sent out, Taos County did receive capital outlay for a freezer for next door, an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Received capital outlay for a hundred thousand for patrol vehicles for the sheriff's office. Talpa Community Center and Library Improvements received a hundred and fifty thousand. Taos County Veteran Cemetery received three million four hundred and seventy thousand. So it's a good chunk of money that came to the county. Other notable projects, whereas the two-point-nine million that went to Town of Taos for the housing project, Red River got, for the school, for the Town of Red River received two-point-two million. And then the auxiliary gym for Taos School District received three million five hundred and ten thousand. So overall, county-wise, not the government, we did pretty good as a county with our municipal partners as well. So for a county, between our legislators and our governor, we'll be receiving twenty-eight million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of capital outlay funding that's coming in for us. We also, there's another four hundred thousand dollars that is, got reverted from New Mexico Department of Transportation to Taos County for the gas line project as part of New Mexico five nineteen. So that will complement the existing capital outlay grant for four million dollars. Senator Gonzalez did provide us junior monies of a hundred thousand for snow removal equipment. So we can buy plows with that. So I've been sure we're able to buy plows and we could probably get a vehicle off of this as well. The other thing to note that does affect the county is Senate Bill two oh five did pass. Everything I've mentioned is still pending the governor's signature. Senate Bill two oh five is the gross receipts tax that the hospital may get. And Commissioner Romero may jump in here, he's studied this pretty good. So Senate Bill two oh five provides funding if the commission passes a resolution to get this on the November ballot. And then there's some other steps the commission have to take. So conceivably, the hospital wouldn't see any monies until July first of 2024. And the other thing to note, this is for bonding. So there's not an allocation that goes to the hospital. So point seven-five, seventy-five percent of the point five zero goes to, to bond for hospital improvements, building improvements, capital improvements of the building. The other point two-five percent of this goes to UNM Taos to support a nursing program that would be like a feeder program to provide nurses for Holy Cross Hospital. Did I get that all right, Commissioner Romero? And those are the major impacts. I still haven't received anything from New Mexico counties regarding any other things that affect, like return to work, I know a version of that did pass. There's the Sheriff's and Detention Recruitment and Retention Fund, that also did pass as well. So those are going to be two benefits to the detention center as well as the sheriff's office. Currently, we're in the process of trying to utilize the existing recruitment fund that the sheriff's office did receive last year.
Thank you, Brent, I just have one question and then Commissioner Vila, you have a question too. My one, oh, I'm sorry, my one question is about the GRT. Like that is next in our court, right, to vote on whether or not to put it on the ballots. My question is the timeline by which we need as a board to do that. And then part two of that question is really, I think, maybe more for Madam Clerk. Are there other ballot items or other elections for this year? Or would this be one, the only ballot item?
So this, this year would be all local elections, so school board items like that?
Okay, thank you.
So Town of Red River won't be hosting the elections as well. I think they're the only municipality that opted in. Town of Taos is debating to opt into this. But Town of Red River, it would be on this cycle as well.
Thank you, and Commissioner Vila?
Yes, a question and a comment. And I think it's going to take a further discussion, but New Mexico Counties, as you, I think, are aware, puts together a list of bills they're going to support, oppose. And that's based on board members from all different counties. And after a discussion on how it's going to affect the different counties. But during the session, lots of different things happen and it sometimes might start off as a support and then maybe we shouldn't support. And we don't have a mechanism right now in place amongst us commissioners as to how do we move forward to support or oppose. We all know that we have to come together in a meeting, so it would have to be a special meeting. Well, things are moving so quick that we can't seem to get our, you know, we can't seem to reach out to the legislators and say, hey, support it, don't support it. And these are the reasons why. So I just, I think we need to have a conversation. As I was tracking and things were moving so fast and I'd reach out to Mr. Harmio is, you know, are you seeing what I'm seeing? This could really be detrimental to Taos County, but we just couldn't come together quick enough. And so I think we do need a mechanism in place and moving forward on the, you know, at the next legislative session. And another thing is that often, and thank you, Commissioner Romelo. I know you stepped up and you testified for this Senate Bill two oh five and appreciate that. And, you know, but we have to remember often that are we, are we doing this as an individual commissioner? Or are we doing it as a whole? And I'm grateful that you did it because it's something you believe in. And so I just worry sometimes that, you know, are we wanting to come together and support it as a whole? Or are we doing this individually?
The other thing that you should have received in your emails, if you haven't received it, please let me know, is New Mexico Counties put on a legislative recap. And so they go out to the different regions. And our region is, our regional meeting is in Las Vegas on April nineteenth at Highlands. And it's from ten to one and lunch would be provided, so if you want to go to that. I've gone in the past, it's a good session where they recap everything. So once I receive their recap, I'll forward that to the commission, but they'll give you a little bit more detail on those items that affect the counties at large. There's also one in Albuquerque on April twelfth, if you can attend, in Las Vegas. It's the same information. And so Albuquerque and Las Vegas are the closest ones to us. The other ones are in Las Cruces and Roswell. But, and this is also open to the other countywide elected officials as well. I know Under Sheriff Ogryff has expressed interesting, and going, I told them we could drive up together or down together to Las Vegas.
Thank you. Any other questions for Manager Harmio? Okay, any further updates, Brent, or was that? Okay, thank you very much. And then Commissioners, that takes us into the home stretch. Item fifteen, Commissioners' Reports and Matters. First up is item A, new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. Any requests for anything new that we haven't?
Madam Chair, what about that one hundred percent community schools, wasn't that supposed to come back?
That is coming back per scheduling. I believe that is coming back on the April eighteenth meeting, so two meetings from now, yep. Okay, seeing no others, let's move on to fifteen B, Commissioners' Announcements. I'll repeat what Commissioner Vila mentioned earlier, which is that the ECOG, the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments, is meeting Thursday afternoon at two online. Typically, at least what I've seen over the last two and a little years, like the chair is the member of that group. And because we don't have time to notice a quorum, only one more of us can, could show up for that. And I know, Commissioner Vila, you've expressed interest, but we can work that out amongst ourselves.
We can, in fact, Madam Chair, if I may. So this is through Zoom, so all the other Commissioners could, as well as myself, that's how I'm going to.
Just watch it?
Yeah, just watch it. Town of Taos, you go into Town of Taos, they have a link, they can't see us, we can't see each other, you know? So really, in essence, okay, we're at our. Does that work?
Trying to get out of trouble.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think that's okay provided that you're not participating in the meeting.
Thank you for pointing that out and thank you for confirming it, Mr. Trujillo, appreciate it. Other announcements, Commissioners?
If I could just kind of add to that, so being the chair last year and attending that particular meeting, basically, it's important for the other Commissioners to know that whatever's discussed, our chair will bring it back. And so any decisions that are made, you know, we will have some input. So just so you all know that she's representing, but she will be bringing back the information.
Yeah, exactly, just like with all the other boards that we sit on, works the same way. Other announcements, Vice Chair Romero?
Nope.
Okay, then let's move on to item C, approval for elected officials and management staff to attend the NACO National Association of Counties Annual Conference and Exposition on Actual Reimbursement from July twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Annual Conference and Exposition on Actual Reimbursement from July twentieth through the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three in Austin, Texas. Mr. Harmio?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we placed this item on the agenda to take advantage of any early bird pricing, uh, for the NACO conference. Uh, back of the envelope, uh, yeah, this would be a cost to the, eh, each person attending, anywhere from twelve, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars. Uh, the way we worded this on the commission agenda is we want, uh, to give approval for the five of you, the countywide elected officials and management, if, uh, they decide to go. That way, uh, so what's happened in the past is, let's say Commissioner Brush wanted to go, she gets on the agenda and then a week later, uh, Ms. Montoya decides I'm going to go. And then she's on the next agenda and then the Madam Assessor and, and, uh, and it actually happened to us in the past, we, Valerie and myself both went to Long Beach, we went like two meetings in a row where there was a different folks, uh, going. So we're trying to do a blanket approval. What happens with this is that the, the meeting minutes become part of the process of getting the check and the registration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harmio. And it, it, it just says approval, it doesn't say decision, but I'm assuming that we need to take a vote to approve this?
Right.
Okay. So is there a motion, team? Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Thank you, Commissioner Viall, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascaranias. Madam, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Viall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you. Um, and then we can have the conversation later about who might be interested in attending. Item fifteen D, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Taos County Commission to Form a Hospital Working Group to Meet Regularly with Members of the Board and Management of Taos Health Systems. And Brent, are you taking this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Bob Romelo had suggested that there be a working group uh, that would work with a subgroup of the Board of Directors. Uh, Mr. Kaiser appointed four or five board members that would be make up the working group. So we're asking authority to form, uh, this commission into the working group to meet with the board and this would be like, uh, quarterly meetings. We do need to advertise for potential, uh, quorum if the five of you or three of you decide. So it's kind of open-ended in the regard that any one of you can attend or all of you could attend uh, the working group session. May I stand for any, uh, questions on it?
And thank you. And Vice Chair Romero or Commissioner Viall, if you would like to?
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, it's, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. I think we've had a working group pretty much since November and, and we've had several meetings after the first of the year and I think it's worked very well. We've been able to get information on the finances. And there's several issues out there like, uh, transporting the patients, it's real critical. And it can really only be addressed by the county and the hospital really working together on this one. And then, of course, um, the getting that information because, uh, hospital is receiving public financing, getting those quarter, quarterly reports is real important. And, uh, in addition, uh, now there's potential with, uh, the legislation in the past, uh, Senate Bill two oh five that there, they may be getting even more financial, uh, public funding. And so, uh, I think there's a need, uh, the, the, the dialogue has been real good already. Uh, the hospital is very receptive to do this, and so I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Commissioner Viall?
Madam Chair, so I did attend as well and I, I have to agree that I thought it was, uh, great, uh, networking. And we were able to dig a little bit deeper. Um, and I, I think that this will prove to be very helpful in building that relationship that, uh, needs to be built. And, um, and as a result of that, and, you know, I, I can honestly say that, uh, the hospital is listening because they also created, uh, another, which I should mention, Operation Team Taos. And I attended that meeting as well. And this was, this one is, I think Commissioners, you all heard about it, and one of our asks or one of the things that we shared with, uh, hospital is that the community was a little upset that we don't have a lot of the locals, um, working in the hospital. They've left to work in another hospital. So they took that, that comment very serious and they have created an Operation Team Taos, which, um, is going to kick off and it's about recruiting those that left uh, to potentially come back and so that our hospital feels more like a community-driven hospital. And so I, I think it's, uh, a good idea, uh, just like THP, it all started with just a conversation about housing. And then all of a sudden here we're now meeting and, and doing some good work. So I, I don't see it to be any different. And so I would certainly say, Commissioners, if you have time to be at these meetings, I would certainly say, please try to attend.
Thank you both for your interest and for showing up.
And by the way, the next meeting is scheduled for April tenth at three o'clock at the hospital boardroom.
Thank you. Um, I would like to move to approve the formation of a hospital working group to meet regularly with members of the Board and Management of Taos Health Systems. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Viall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, and again, the date of next meeting, April tenth, three o'clock at the hospital?
Three o'clock.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Okay, and that brings us to item sixteen, team, which is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Vice Chairs, our second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Viall. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Viall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, so thank you very much. This Taos County Commission meeting is adjourned at ten thirty-nine.
We're efficient? So we should just call two though? Retreat.
Oh.
Before, yeah, like what was, what was he before?
He was, um, he was a MMT, but he was a supervisor. He had operation supervisor, this title. Yeah, it's been a smooth transition because we had, uh, we knew that Chris's retirement was coming, so we were working ahead to, um, to fill that and, and start, uh, training on David. And we knew it'd be a smooth transition.